Katie Rollstad. Bruce? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of Laconia City Council Meeting to order. We're in the Armond Baldick City Council Chambers. I am Mark Haynes. I am filling in for the mayor, who is traveling. I am the counselor from Woodford. Glenn Smith, would you lead us to salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Glenn. You are joined by our recording secretary, Katie Gargano. Madam Secretary, would you please call the law roll?
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Susie.
Here.
Counselor Hoffman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Brogert.
Here.
Counselor Fouch.
Here.
Thank you, Katie. We are joined by our city manager, Kurt Biatic, and our business administrator, Glenn Smith. We have no council proclamations. Article, item seven is the acceptance of minutes. Minutes of the Laconia City Council Meeting of September 22, 2025 were distributed to the members of the city council on September 26, 2025, with no corrections or changes submitted to the clerk. At this time, the minutes will be accepted as distributed. Item eight is a consent and action item. Temporary traffic order 2025-19 Laconia High School Homecoming Parade. Laconia High School has requested approval of a temporary traffic order for Laconia High School Homecoming Parade from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. on Friday, the 17th. Just for the information, the parade will go down Union Avenue from Laconia High School to the intersection of Church Street to Church Street, Pleasant Street to the intersection of New Salem Street to Bank of New Hampshire. There are a number of streets that are listed in the traffic order that will not allow traffic during the parade group. I need a motion. Counselor Susie. I move to approve the temporary traffic order 2025-2019 Laconia High School Homecoming Parade to be held on October 17, 2025, from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Cheney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Thank you. Article, item nine, citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the time set aside for anyone in the audience to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I've asked a young lady representing Santa's Village to come in tonight and do a short presentation, if you wouldn't mind. This is the 50th year, and so I had asked her to come up and wherever the heck she is.
Okay, just a minute. Is there any objection? From the council? Okay.
I also have my presentation that I had created. Is there any way I can plug it in?
Could you just adjust the microphone?
I have a presentation for this as well. I don't know how to plug it in.
Okay. I think Glenn can help you with that. You don't have an HDMI?
I do over on the side.
You may notice I didn't race up there to help.
You gotta be 12 years old.
You gotta find a 12.
Well, between nine and 12. That one's labeled Zoom, so I think that will... Oh, no.
Did something. Yeah, you have to hit something. It's there.
So you're casting it?
Actually, I don't know.
Are you seeing it on this one?
No.
No, but we seen it go blank, so we know it recognized it.
Is your presentation on the computer screen? If that doesn't work, the gray one might be the one you're looking for.
I think so, but I don't think she has a test on HDMI.
Here's Counselor Susie showing off, making the rest of us look bad.
Well, if it blows out...
At least we didn't have our hands in it.
It's on here, right?
But just to cast it.
Right. Usually there's a toggle switch right here that you can do. I don't see it on this one. You can go to Settings and Screen.
It just needs to be on the same network as these TVs are.
You should be able to show it. There's usually...
For flash, that would be sure that was tapped after the long keep here.
No, it doesn't have to be on the same network. As long as you get this here, and this is covered to there. It is when you do PowerPoints, as long as they're on the same. As I understand, there's a toggle, but I don't see it here.
It's also probably...
Right. Doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be on a network because she's got it in a PowerPoint, so she's connected here. That brings it really bad. It is a toggle.
I think this one. That one is labeled Zoom.
Oh, yeah, that's why it's on.
We don't have the connection. She's got one of those.
Yep. Oh, wait a minute. We got this.
Like I said, it's closed.
Katie, do you know what's going on over there?
Oh, that's audio? Never mind.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, well, I can just talk about what... I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
So... I'm here on behalf of Christmas Village, which I don't know if you guys have seen or heard of it, but it is a nonprofit organization that happens every year at the Laconia Community Center. We originated in 1975, so it's our 50th year, like Pastor Cheney had said. And we have a bunch of different things, like crafts for all the kids. I actually brought some examples. One of the kids actually made me this. But we have some crafts, and all the kids get to go up and see Santa. So for, what we need is we need new flooring, because the flooring is 50 years old. And also, there's a lot of rips. There's some mold in it, and it doesn't lay flat anymore. And that was, we purchased it at $10,000, and we're looking for any donations that we can to help fund this new flooring.
This is in the community center, so it's our building. She's asking for help with...
I can have a question.
Let me explain about the flooring. They have to cover the entire armory floor where the basketball. And it's, it was a $10,000 purchase to replace this. It's 50 years old, or maybe you've done it a couple times, but it was quite an expenditure from their, their, excuse me, from their account. And it's, it's a great cause. Every kid gets a gift.
Yes, everyone gets a gift, and they also, they get to see Santa, they get to make their crafts, and they get to make their own ornaments upstairs. We also have the cookies that we have donated every year in the dining area. And we also have free books or stuffed animals in Grandma's room that we also give up. We give away.
It's, you're all familiar with it. Anne Dearborn, at the time, and her husband did it for many, many years. And certainly a great cause for the community.
Question, please. I just question, Amy, you're here. Could you come up for a moment, please? I think it's great for us, okay? But I want to ask you a question. Is this the only organization or the only way, the only way you need to have the floor covered?
Yes.
There's nothing else that's used for, just for that?
It's used for one month out of the year.
Okay. Would you use it for anything else if that, if that, and you would not? Okay.
No. It, it would belong to them. I mean, technically, if you guys donated money, it would belong to the city, but it belongs to them, and we would never use their things.
Did they, did you already purchase it?
Yeah.
Was it monies that you had put aside?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted, since it's box of records in the same building, I was just asking that question. That's all.
And like I had said, we use these floors, like this flooring cover, for a lot of years. Like, this one's 50 years old, and we've used it, and it's very well used.
Well, it's got mold in it. You can't use it.
Yeah, we can't use it anymore. It's unsafe.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I might, I'd like to make a motion that we donate $5,000 to Santa's Village to help purchase a new floor. I think probably the mold has had some help from the city's building, providing some moisture and other things to, to create the problem. So I'd like to see us help these folks.
And I'll second that motion. Okay. Katie, did you get that? Is there any other discussion?
I just got a question to the city manager. Do we have an appropriate place that we could allocate that money from?
Yep, so I can certainly, I certainly find it. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. If you wanted to hold the vote until next month, we could do an agenda item, and then I can spell out where it would come from, if that would be easier for you to actually see it, to give me, you give me a chance just to pick exactly where I want to take it from.
I don't think, to me, I don't think it's necessary on my behalf. I'm just curious if, if we know where it would come from and...
Yeah, we have a, we have a non-capitalized reserve we can use. That would have to go back to the trustees, so once it's approved on your end, it would take some time to go through the, but that wouldn't hold us up too long.
Is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to mention to this group that this adult standing in front of us is 17. I don't, I don't know how they get that old.
Mark.
I got one other.
Yeah.
Tony.
I just want to...
Counselor Fouch.
I just want to say I've been involved with the, with that, and my child went through it many years, but also through the children's auction, who also makes a donation every year. They do work on a very tight budget, so this will be good for them and good for the city.
And, and they work hard to raise funds. It's not like they want everything from us. They, they have a lot of folks who participate, so...
Yep. Counselor Susie?
One more thing, realizing it's your budget, but between you and your group, if you would, maybe after Christmas Village is done this year, and you see what your future looks like, if you want to come to the council, make, how did things go? Secondly, here's our plans, and if there's things like this that we need to look at, the city can look at it, put into their plan also. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Thank you, Sammy.
Okay. All those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. All right. Okay, we have no interviews, there's no nominations, there's, oh, I'm sorry. We still need to go back to citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. I'm sorry. Is there anybody, is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to address the council? On matters not on the agenda? Okay? All right. We are on to, I'd like the council to move item 14 up so that we can have the presentation for the Laconia Pumpkin, Pumpkin Fest. Is there any objections? Nope. Okay. Whoever is, I guess it's Amy, or...
Actually, I have a team.
See, we surprised you. You thought, you thought you were going to have to sit through all the public hearings.
I actually did, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. All right. So I'm going to hand out our... That is our map and our schedule of events on the backside of it. First of all, I'd like to say that we were given this task with about seven months total to, to accomplish it, and I, I was excited but exceedingly nervous. After getting through almost all seven months now, because we have less than two weeks to go, I couldn't be more thrilled with the team that was put together for this. They have been over-the-top helpful, and they've done so much, so I just want to throw out a little, little, little shot to the team, so, and these are my two, my two cohorts, so they're amazing. As you all know, October 25th is Pumpkin Fest this year. We are going to be from, open from 11 to 8:10. I know that sounds weird, but I'll get to it. We are having a 34-foot tower for pumpkins, and that will hold about 900 pumpkins. So please bring us your carved pumpkins. We need them. Please make sure they are carved, because we don't want to have to carve them for you. And we can't put up pumpkins that are not carved onto the tower itself. Needs to have a light shining through it. If anyone does bring pumpkins that need to say a phrase, we recommend you write the back of the phrase on at least one of the pumpkins and then number them, so that we understand what you're trying to say to us when you hand us a bunch of pumpkins. If we have over the 900 pumpkins, which I'm hoping we do, I'm, we have A-frames that will go in front of the tower, and it will, it will showcase in front of the tower. And anything that any businesses want to do out front of their businesses, I'm all for that as well. We have over 90 vendors that have reached out to the city itself through Nancy without any solicitations. Nothing was asked of anyone. This is people willing and able to come out to us and say, we want to be involved. So that's amazing. In addition to that, we have the Great New England Craft and Artisan Show. They are bringing in 80 vendors as well for crafts. So there's quite the array of things that people can see and do and buy and sell, so, and eat, thank you, most important. We have two locations for the bounce houses that are going to be, one is, you'll see the number four on your map. It's in two locations. That's not a typo. There's going to be some on Church Street and some on Beacon Street West. In addition to that, we do have a kid zone, which is going to be located in the walking path between where the old soda shop was. I'm not sure what you call that, but it's the walking path between, by the old soda shop. It's what I call it. In that, we'll have a rock wall that kids can climb. There will be, Bellknap 4-H Club is going to bring some... Calves and rabbits. Rabbits. Kind of awesome. And as well as other kid-type activities. We'll have a nine-hole mini golf course. You can see the list on the back and the front of all the things that are happening, but we're going to have six performances. Three by the Wicked Witches of the, of New England, nope, of Lakes Region. Two by the Stonebird Belly Dancers, and one by the Tara Little School of Dance, which is, I believe, an Irish dance, Irish jig, which would be awesome. That'll be on the stage. We'll have three bands. The first one that was, is sponsored by the Putnam Fund, and that is the Little Mermen and the Princess Pals. It's a Disney-themed entertainment for the kids to get out there and, and dance and sing along, and it'll be, it'll be a great time. Then we have the Whitney Doucette Band, which will happen at 4 o'clock. She opened for Shania Twain last year at the Bank of New Hampshire Pavilion. And we have a local band called Axis, and they are an 80s tribute band. So it's kind of nice. We have a number of sponsors, and we have about $18,000, maybe a little bit over $18,000 in sponsors that have come in, and about $70,000 in-kind sponsors. Now, I'm counting the TIF as one of those in-kind sponsors, because technically they are. We are doing other things in order to make money. For instance, right there, lovely. If you haven't gotten your T-shirt, please get your T-shirts downstairs. Go see Nancy. So we're selling T-shirts, we're selling mugs. The mugs have two different themes on them. One, they both have our logo, but one says, "Fall in Love with Laconia," and the other one is, "The Pumpkins Are Coming." We'll have a cornhole tournament. We have an outdoor recreation area, a pumpkin art exhibit, which is going to be at the Bellknap Mill. I mentioned the nine-hole mini golf. We'll have three movies at the Colonial that will all be for free, and people are welcome to walk in and see the beautiful building at no cost. Three beer tents will happen. We are putting our photo tower that normally goes at the Weers for Motorcycle Week. It'll be overlooking, not really overlooking, but overlooking the Vet Square, so you can get a, a bird's-eye view of the tower and the A-frames and all that good stuff. We'll have an information booth, so people can come and get, get information from us and to purchase some of the materials. There's train rides. There's one on Friday night for a dinner train ride. It's a two-hour event. And then every hour, on the hour starting at 11 until 5 o'clock, they will do train rides from the train station. We're going to have decorations and uplighting throughout the, throughout the event. Pumpkin drop-off is going to be happening Friday between 10 and 6, right here, just north of us here on Beacon Street East. Lastly, we are kicking off the evening, which is hence the 8:10. We are kicking off the evening, or ending the evening, sorry, with a laser show. It is, we, we're going to do the fireworks, but with the drought, we are unable to. Also, insurance companies didn't like the fact that we were so close to other buildings. So we are going to do a laser show, and it is going to go from the actual pumpkin tower, which is going to be a quite unique experience. It's going to last from 7:50 to 8:10, hence the reason it's staying up until 8:10. So it's a little weird. This has taken a number of, of man-hours. The city is putting in a lot of effort into this, and I, I again want to give a shout-out to my team that have been tirelessly working on this, and I couldn't be more proud, and I hope you are as well, because I think it's going to be an amazing event. So I just want to get you guys excited about it, and welcome everyone. I know everybody's riveted to the TV right now watching this. Want to get them excited about coming down and, and seeing the Pumpkin Fest and, and having a good time. Just, it's a family fun event, and come on down. Do you guys have any questions?
Yes.
Counselor Fouch.
So a couple of things. Are the beer tents going to be open later?
They are open until 10.
Okay. And the pumpkins for the tower, you don't need to bring candles for them?
You do not. They will be lit. Thank you. Good question. They will be lit through electricity, LED lights behind it.
Anyone else? Counselor Bogart?
It's not a question. It's more of, what a hell of a job y'all did. That's all I could say. It's just awesome looking. So thank y'all for all the hard work.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Anyone else?
No, I mean, I'm with them whenever we get, with them, whenever we get together, and I can tell you, they've done a lot of work, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. they've done a lot of work, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that nobody sees. And, you know, that morning, we'll be starting at 5 o'clock, I believe?
5:00 AM, yes.
I know, I got the first shift.
Me too, don't worry.
And we'll have a good time, and we're, not to take any thunder away, but we're already understanding and putting together the following year. Okay? So that's gonna be even bigger and better, right?
Yes, it is. We're hoping for a two-day event next year.
Right. And maybe a little bit earlier. Could you give a map to Gabe, so that, unless he doesn't already have one, so...
So yeah, our plan, I didn't know if you wanted to mention it, Council Susie, or if you wanted me to, is to have it one week earlier, so technically it would be next weekend, if it was next year. So it'll be the weekend after Columbus Day, so that the potential of having amusements coming into La Conia is there, because they're already at Sandwich Fair, and now they can come to La Conia Pumpkin Fest.
Because that was the...
If we wished.
If, if I may.
No, go ahead.
That was one of them, was one of, a lot of people ask us, why didn't we have, you know, big amusement rides and everything else come? It was, one of the reasons was because of that, okay? And we're later in the year, and they're already headed south. Because, you know, they, this is a, they travel south and north and off the south. So next year, we're doing this, and then we think, we're planning on, I think the dates were 17th and 18th?
You got it.
Saturday, and Saturday, we would be till 10 o'clock at night, I think we talked about, okay? And Sunday, roughly like noon time to 5:00, okay? But the same thing, we bring in all these vendors, they can close up shop, be back the next day. We're hoping 15, 20,000 people, if not more, this year. We'll just have good weather, it'll be great, okay? And it's, it's done very well. And there's a lot of things we did this year that we're gonna be able to keep for next year. If you notice, you got your T-shirt there, Joya? Okay? A great idea that came out of the team there was, there's no date. Okay, so we can, you know, we can keep them going. We've had to put in a second order already. So if you want some, get them on the last, especially the mugs. The mugs are awesome.
Thank you.
And then, what, $10, $10 a piece?
T-shirts are 15. Yes. One thing I failed to mention to you was the marketing that was, was put into this, that Joya did, was outstanding. And I know it's small, but you can tell how big that list is of everywhere that it has been advertised. And on this side of the list are all the links that you could go to to find it. So we are out there. I could list them all for you, but that would bore everyone, and I'm not about to bore everyone. So if you would like that list, I can provide it to you, so that you know everything that we've done. But we're trying to get the word out there, and I think we've done a pretty good job.
Anyone else? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's some rat cards and stickers. Open the door if you wanna grab one on the way out.
Maps.
And maps, I'm sorry, there's maps too.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. All right, we're back on to the agenda. Item 12 is Communications. We have none. Public hearings. We have a number of public hearings, and I'd just like to set the stage here. Anyone that would like to address the council in regards to the public hearing, or anything in regard to that? Be more than welcome. State your name and address, and I'd like to keep it to three minutes, if possible. So, first item 13A is the public hearing at Resolution 25-30, Resolution Relative to Authorizing the Acceptance of the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of $133,542 to fund the La Conia Police Department's tethered drones project. The notice of the public hearing was made available on September 25, 2025, edition of La Conia Daily Sun, posted at La Conia City Hall, La Conia Community Center, La Conia Public Library, and the offices of SAU. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:30. Is there anyone who would like to address the council in regards to that matter? I'd like to remind the council that this, all these public hearings will be taken up under unfinished business later on in the meeting. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:31. 13B, Public Hearing Resolution 25-31, Resolution Relative to Authorizing the Acceptance of New Hampshire Department of Safety 2025 Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of $51,000 to fund the La Conia Police Department Utility Side-by-Side Vehicle Project. The notice of the public hearing was made available September 25 and 2025 edition of the Daily Sun, posted at La Conia City Hall, La Conia Community Center, La Conia Public Library, and the offices of SAU. I open this public hearing at 7:31. If anyone would like to address this matter, now is the time.
What is it? Side-by-side vehicle project?
It's, yes.
What is it?
Okay, well, just a second.
If, if you'd like me to.
No, go ahead.
It's, I'm not sure if it'll be the Polaris brand, but it's a side-by-side ATV, that, with trailer and all that. Yeah.
Okay, so you know when I close the public hearing at 7:32. 13C, Public Hearing Ordinance 25-201-13, Amending Paragraph 2001-7, Depositing Snow and Ice in Paragraph, excuse me, 201-13, Violation Penalties to Chapter 201 Streets and Sidewalks. Again, this was made available at the Conia Daily Sun, City Hall, Community Center, Public Library, and the offices of SAU. Just for information's sakes, this is, went to Public Works Committee. We had last winter some severe problems with snow being dumped on sidewalks. We're not talking about local plow operators. We're talking about excessive amounts of snow. So that's what that's about.
Is this regarding residents trying to clear their driveways?
No.
I'm Mark Diddy, and I have property on Church Street in La Conia. This is what brought me here tonight. I saw it posted at the library, and I was curious, because I have to clear my driveways, and I try very hard not to put snow in the roadway or leave any in the sidewalk. And I'm just curious what this was about. Is this, is this read, can I find this somewhere available to find out what the penalties and the regulations are on this?
Maybe if he's gonna hand you a property, you can take a look at it.
What a good man.
Sir, we're not talking about local plow operators. We're talking about massive snow. There were, we had incidents where a whole lawn was cleared and deposited on the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
And we had a parking lot that was completely cleaned, and everything in the parking lot was dumped on the sidewalk. That's what brought this about.
That makes sense. It's understandable.
Obviously, Public Works had to go clean it up, so...
I was just curious for myself. I didn't wanna be in violation of anything.
No, it gives you 24 hours to clean it up, too, so...
Tony, I'll just have you come and do it for me.
I wanna take a picture of that.
Yes. Chris.
Chris Gilmat, Ward 4, Center Street, La Conia here. Really just looking, again, for some clarification on this. My property is actually on the fork of two roads, Center Street and Adams Street. There really is no, a sidewalk comes down Center Street and just dumps out into the road, and the sidewalk on Adams Street dumps out into the road. Sidewalk plow will, most years will just plow right straight down. But along those same lines, the city of La Conia clears that whole non-road area. And when you talk about piles of snow, just dumps the snow right there, and we're talking like 20 feet of snow. And the sidewalk plow cannot go through. And this past year, sidewalk plow took it upon himself to create a sidewalk across my yard, which dug that all up. Tried blocking it a couple times. It's my property. Did run out to him at one point, finally caught up with him and said, "There's no sidewalk there." And he was like, "But I can't get through." Am I gonna get fined because the city of La Conia is dumping snow, blocking the sidewalk on my property? That's...
Chris, the Public Works Director is right behind you, and we'll ask him to give you an answer. I hate to put you on the spot, Wes, but...
No, sir, 'cause eventually we'll get around to clean up our piece. This is really focused on the big parking lots and the big businesses that just take everything from the lot and dump it on the sidewalks, and it's about, yeah, I think the big one last year was someplace around 12 to 14 feet tall.
Right. Yes, go ahead. Council Susie?
But in the same, same fact, okay? I have the same problem, Mr. Diddy's house, and also I have it at the bottom of Lyman Street where I live, okay? They clear, and the sidewalk plow comes through, and he tries to get through, and he can't, okay? And it's snow either from our plows going around the corner, I think that's where your problem might be, okay? Or also it's snow coming up.
They just dump it right there, as they're clearing.
But I, when, as part of the Public Works Committee, when we reviewed this and you were there, Wes, okay? Is that correct? We're looking for where the big commercial operations are taking place.
We're looking for where they take a parking lot, basically, and they dump it all on the sidewalk.
But at the same time, if the, if the sidewalk plow, not purposely, but creates a situation that can't be used, then whoever the property owner should contact the city, let us know, and we'll come and fix it.
Yep.
That's where I was coming from, Mark.
Chris, is that...
Well, it doesn't, but I'm hoping I don't get fined because the snow is...
That was not the intent.
Oh, I understand there's intent and what really happened. So I'm just making sure, as a homeowner, I'll clear my driveway. And actually, I clear my driveway, sidewalk plow will come by. So do I get to send a bill to the city to go back out?
No, but you're clearing driveway.
So, so, no, my, my, my concern really is, what is, what is considered my area? If I'm just clearing my driveway, am I also responsible for the sidewalk that's going by my house that I've, I have not blocked?
I would recommend two things. One, that you call the Director of Public Works and make him aware of the problem as the year goes on. And secondly, if that fails, take a picture, give it to the city manager, who will discuss it with us, and we'll try and get it straightened out for you. Okay?
And if that fails, you know who the counselor is to call.
I've seen him around.
I can give him a show.
Is there anyone else? I'd like to close this, it's 7:39. All right. 13D. Public Hearing Amending Paragraph 221-36, period 1 to Article 3, Parking Standing and Stopping to Chapter 221 Vehicles Proposed for a Residential Parking System Only. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:40. Is there anyone who would like to address that item?
For someone who owns property in...
Mark Diddy. For someone who owns property in La Conia, but doesn't live in La Conia, is, how would this be an effect? I mean...
Council Chaney?
If I might, Mark. This is intended for some of the streets that are way too narrow. I don't think your property's on a really narrow street.
Like River Street or Howard Street?
Well, yeah, those might fit in. I guess the city engineer would have to tell us, but it's intended for very narrow streets, where if you park, there's not a lot, a lot of room left to drive around. This started in the Weers with some of the old campground streets.
Sure.
And, and so you're entitled to apply for a resident-only parking permit for the street.
Okay.
It'll come before the council, and then you'll be issued a sticker on your windshield, like the former inspection stickers.
Or like the beach parking stickers?
And, and then if your Aunt Millie comes from Milwaukee, you'll get one of those hooked over the mirror deals for the short time. It'll be dated for how long Millie's here. But the real intent of this, it, it did start in the Weers, but there are enough places in the city where things are really narrow, and we ought to look at that. If you have a concern, please contact the city Public Works Director, for starter. And I know he's gonna hate me for this, but see, see what his view is for...
He's got big shoulders. Is there an additional fee for getting that sticker?
A small fee. The small fee to pay for the stickers and that kind of stuff, that's all, just a re...
It'll probably be dollars, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I was just gonna say, and this is gonna be very few streets. This is not citywide, this, and we don't have any streets as of right now. This is to give you a program for the future.
Thank you.
So forgive me, but would this also, this particular amendment, would this apply to the little neighborhood area that's up at the Weers, behind the railroad tracks, all the small streets?
If, if I, if I may, we have nothing identified. What this did is, so we had a, we did have one street that we, that we did this on, and knowing that if we're gonna do one street, it was in the Weers, we should really have a policy in place, so that's what drew this up. So right now, there's no streets identified. This is to say that if, wherever you live, if you were to come along to your council and say, "I think this is, would fit my street,"
Right.
that council could bring it forward and have the discussion, so we actually have something to go on. So right now, they, they have no streets that they're looking at.
Okay. The, there was an article in the paper a week or so ago concerning, about this meeting, and it did mention that specifically. I think it mentioned Week Street or Kingsley Street, or, I thought it did, so that's why I just wanted to...
We did.
We did one street, we did Simpson, but there's nothing, there's nothing in, there's no identified streets as of right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Ma'am? Could the city clerk have your name, please?
My name?
Yes.
Yep, Leslie McEvoy. Do you need to spell it? M-C-E-V-O-Y.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close this public hearing at 7:44. 13E, Public Hearing, Resolution 25-32, Request to Expand Funds for Downtown Pedestrian Safety Circulation for Pumpkin Festival. Notice was given at City Hall, La Conia Daily Sun, La Conia Community Center, La Conia Public Libraries, and Office of S-A-U. Just a quick, what is being requested is $12,500 for traffic barriers, $2,000 for a power generator, and $22,000, $22,500 for mobile light towers. And this is in regards to Pumpkin Fest. And I'll open the public hearing at 7:45. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:46. Okay. Last but not least. Thirteen F. To gather public input on question, if, on the question, quote, if the city council, the Laconia City Council should create social districts as defined in the House Bill four sixty-seven that will appear on the November ballot. This again was noted, noted in the Laconia Daily Sun, Laconia City Hall, Laconia Community Center, Laconia Public Library, and the Offices of S-A-U. At the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five council meeting, the first public hearing was held on the matter, and the motion was approved to place the question regarding creating social districts on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five municipal election ballot. A second public hearing is required to be held fifteen to thirty days prior to the ballot question being voted on. The purpose of the evening's public hearing is to allow questions and comments from matters, from members of the public. Kurt, could you just give us a three-thousand-foot?
Sure, and I don't know if you mentioned it, but there will be no action taken tonight. You've already done your action, it's already on the ballot, required in the RSA. It required we held a second, they called it a public hearing, but in reality, it's a public question information session, but it is a public hearing, so if anybody from the public would like to ask questions about it. This is the social districts that if passed on the ballot, will allow you as the council to identify. Outdoor drinking can happen around establishments, probably the easiest way of saying it. So if I'm a licensed, if I, if I'm a bar owner and my bar sits within a social district that you identify, people can order something in my restaurant, bar, walk outside, drink it outdoors, and in that district. Again, if it's passed on the ballot, it comes to you, you'll work. What my hope is, is it would work as the council with our public safety officials within the city to identify a good, solid areas that, that you feel comfortable with, that would go to the liquor commission for, for an approval, and then it, and then a vote on your end. So there's a number of steps left to go, but the biggest one is to get it through the ballot in November.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment in regards to this? Yes.
Hi, I'm John Hildreth, Ward One. I had a question, does this supersede the need for, say, a one-day license to do it? So this would be a permanent fixture?
Yeah, and that's why, that's my, why my recommendation to the council is that it's all done through public safety, you know, police, fire, public works, so that way it would supersede those.
Super, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Can I ask a terrifying question?
Yes.
To the city manager? When you, when, the question was, will it supersede a permit? They would still need to have an event permit more than likely to use the social dis, in other words, just any old Friday night is not gonna be.
I'll admit, I'm gonna have to look down into it a little bit, but I don't foresee that, that's not how I read it. I will check on that to confirm, but I, I, I don't, I didn't see that as, as a requirement. So.
So it could just be outside drinking any other time?
Yes, yeah, that's how I read it.
So along with that question, could this social district be limited to certain days, say, weekends?
Yeah, that I think you could do.
Okay.
Yeah, it really falls back onto you, but it allows it to be a little bit more open.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no one, I'll close this public hearing at seven forty-nine. Okay. Mayor's report. I spoke to the mayor this morning, and he didn't have anything that he wanted me to add. I'd just like to, I think the council may have seen your, the city manager's note that we received letters of thank you from the Boys and Girls Club CASA and from the Lakes Region VNA for the contributions that were made to those organizations. Also, I'd like to thank Tyler and Rob. I think we're well on our way to working on the master plan, and their meeting that they held was great. And I think the great things are gonna happen with that. And thank you to the people again, Pumpkin Fest, I think they're doing a great job. So with that, council comments. Counsel Hoffman?
I have a few items. At the last meeting of the Public Works Committee, we, we met on Pleasant Street to discuss the intersection of Pleasant and North Main. We discussed a few different solutions to that, but I think the residents of the street were a little hesitant to approve of something that was gonna interrupt trash service, because several of the solutions, I think there were some concerns about how it would affect the trash pickup, because I was just wondering if the city manager had any update on that.
I do not, I will, I have not got that for you, I will get that. And also for the next time, when, when we do that, I'll also get an update, CLPDs, because I know they've been doing it. So I'll find out how they've been, if, if they've seen anything out of it.
Appreciate it, thanks. The other thing is, came to my attention that I think there's some issue with parking downtown for, for some of the tenants of, of the properties there. It's my understanding that there's an ordinance saying that there's no overnight parking in the city lots, but that on a case-by-case basis, we've been issuing permits to property owners to distribute to their tenants to allow overnight parking. Then there's some issue that, then those tenants aren't allowed to park there during the day. It just seems to me that if we're trying to encourage the development of downtown and encourage people to develop housing, that, that we should have a overall parking plan for residents of downtown that's not kind of handled on a case-by-case basis and isn't kind of a bureaucratic nightmare for, for the tenants to, to figure out where they're gonna park. I guess I'd like the Government Ordinance Committee to maybe consider modifying the ordinance that does not allow overnight parking in the city lots, and maybe we could look at having that by permit.
Anything else, Counsel Hoffman?
That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you very much.
If I can just comment on, I think the issue is snow removal.
Sure.
So I think we gotta, in fairness, find, you know, if they're parked there overnight, then they can't park there in the day because we gotta clean it up during the day.
I mean, I think that's why snow emergencies exist, right? So then you wouldn't be able to park there during a, basically during a storm, right? I feel like there's.
The committee can look at that, yeah.
I feel like there's a reasonable solution here that's going to allow, going forward as, you know, hopefully more properties downtown are developed into apartments, that there's a clear path to.
I agree with you. I just, we need to be cognizant of.
Yeah.
His problems.
I agree.
Our committee could take a look at that and.
Yep.
Okay, Counsel Volga.
I agree with Counsel Hoffman. I brought this up the last time we had this discussion, that people who work night shifts, since we are service-type entertainment area, that we have people that work nights, so they sleep during the day and they need to be able to park their cars somewhere while they're sleeping. You know, we are turning into a twenty-hour town to where there's probably a four-hour window where it's just quiet. But the rest of the time, they're either working, or they're day shift people or they're night shift people. So I agree with you, and I think we should take a deep dive into that.
We can do that.
The second thing I had was, have we been able to get anywhere with the lighting along the river, as far as I know, RFP?
Yeah, that's actually.
For the TIF.
TIF is looking at that right now.
Very.
We, we had to update the RFP and that's being worked on, so yes. Yeah, I'll just make a comment on the parking. We have addressed a couple of those issues about the, if I work at night, you know, and so, but yeah, it's a case-by-case base, so it's a, it does add, and the Public Works Director and I have started having conversations about changing up how we would do a snow emergency. So I think whoever the chair of the government operation, it's you, right? If you, if you want us to schedule a meeting, we can work on doing a normal way we schedule meeting and that was on agenda. We can do that.
Okay, that's fine. Any other comments from the council? Okay. Committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Personally, no.
Liaison reports, okay?
I have one.
Yes.
I have to say that with the Lakes Region Public Access, they're kind of in dire straits at the moment. They're a, they've had to move all of their stuff over to the Guilford City Hall, all the equipment and stuff. What it came down to is we lost over in Historical Society where they were located. We lost that because they were gonna re-furbish the building and whatnot, so we had to have it relocated, and we've yet to be able to find a home. So we're actively looking at trying to find a home, at least, for an office and a small studio with a green screen or something like that. So I asked the city council if there's any thoughts along that. They would deeply be appreciated to see if we could do that. It is an organization that is ran on a shoestring, so keep that in mind. That it's just, what it's budgeted is what it brings in and, and vice versa. So it, it's not a, a big operating budget that it works on. But I think the service they provide for the cities and the other cities that they work with are really worth their value. So any thoughts on that would be greatly appreciated if, with that, so that's it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Item nineteen, citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. Anyone would like to comment on current items, agenda? Items that are on the agenda, okay?
Yep.
Anyone? Nope, okay. We're on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Financial, financial and operational trends for this month is with you. I've got a few highlights here, you'll note that building construction, we're seeing those numbers come up this year again compared to last year as have the total number of building permits requested, which you'll see on the next page. Fire had a very busy month, not only in total call volume, but if you look about three-quarters of the way down their data, they had five days of over twenty calls, that's a number we've always tracked, the, the over twenty calls in one day. To have five of them, if you look back in the last few months, last few Septembers, they've only had a total of two. So just shows that they've been really busy and the total costs of the year are up. The Mobile Integrated Healthcare Community Paramedic Program is listed there for you. See those numbers continuously going up each month.
While it's on that subject, I just had a question.
Do you wanna finish?
I, I can go with whatever, whichever you want.
Okay, Counsel Susie.
On the M.I.H. Community Paramedics data, okay, which I think is fantastic.
Yep.
My question is, how do you determine to send whether the ambulance or the paramedic? How, in other words, a call comes in, and I see we've run up and it's saved us, it's awesome.
The estimated reduced transports could be the ambulance went out on a call, got there and said, this patient doesn't need to go to the hospital, but they need something to take care of them.
Okay.
This, this Mobile Integrated Healthcare Community Paramedic is trained a little bit different, and they can do some certain things that even our normal paramedics can't do on, things like wound care and stuff like that. So they could do that without having to send the patient to the hospital. So that's one way as an example of how they would reduce a, a transport.
Okay, I think it's awesome, and now this only operates so much time in a day, right?
So there, you know, it's, it's Monday through Friday, but they do, they, I know that this person, she's already come in off-hours because there was a, you know, there's been cases where they, well, this person would be great to have here for this. They'll call her if she's available, she would come in and, and take it. So yes, it's limited hours, but they're, they are, they are outside of hours as well.
Okay, is there, is there any discussion taking place about expanding this in the future?
You know, I think we're just so new in it right now that, yes, the answer, the short answer is yes. The long answer is I think we still gotta get a lot of data behind it, you know, at least, I would say at least a year's worth of data to see what, to see what that looks like and that, and what expansion would, would mean.
My, my thing when I see this, my first thought is that it's a great service to the community, and it's also saving us money.
I, I, look, I'll tell the, the Fire Department Chief Hubert in this and, and his team over there. This is not new to the world of emergency medicine, pre-hospital medicine across the country. I don't, I, I don't fact-check me here, but I believe we're the first one in the state in Hampshire to run this program full-time. And it's, so it's nice to see that drawn into the state here, and I could be wrong, so again, don't, don't. But if we're not the first, we may be, we're in the top, maybe one or two in the state to do this. So it's, it's nice to see it moving forward. And I know Chief Hubert is already meeting with other chiefs around the state. They've called him and said, hey, can you meet with me and, and discuss what you're doing? So it's a great program.
Thank you.
If I might add, Kurt, I, I, I think the community is unaware of this program. And I think it's a new program, and I think the council and the Fire Department is to be congratulated that we put this into effect, and it's saved a lot for a lot of people in the city. So it's a great program. And I think Counselor Cheney, you were adamant that we do this, and you ought to be congratulated for that also.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Kurt, I'm sorry for the.
Can I say that's it? That would land on a high note, no.
You can if you want.
No, we'll keep moving along. So you'll note that the, the general assistance stat at the bottom, our welfare, some of our other general assistance is there. The numbers averaging out for the first three months is right on where we wanna be, or where our budget is set up at. So, you know, if we're in that thirteen, fourteen thousand dollar a month range, it'll, it'll meet our, our, what we've budgeted. We've obviously gone up in what we've budgeted each of the last few years, but if we can stay within that number, that's, we're, we're at least gonna stay within budget.
Have a question on that?
Yeah.
So there's a big drop-off from August to September, especially in our general assistance for shelter. Is there any specific reason for that, or is it?
Yep. Hate to say it, but that drop-off is mostly the result of timing of when invoices got paid in September. We're moving some folks around, and just the billing's gone a little bit out of cycle. So I think what you'll see is an offset in October.
Thank you.
Next page, Police Department, their numbers two show quite a bit of increase this month. Note the calls for service, but then the next three, the, the community policing, extra patrols, you know, just comparatively to what it looked like over the last few years. They've really stepped up in effort to try to get that extra patrol and community policing out there as a, as an emphasis. Especially, I don't say especially in the downtown, they're trying to do it everywhere, but you see them a lot more, foot patrols, and a lot more just being out, shaking hands and, and talking with people. So those numbers are all increased. Property tax collection is good, where we were expected to be about this time. The overtime on the next page, we have seen a little bit of a decrease from where we were this year last time by percentage, both in the overall and in a couple of our higher-cost overtimes. We know that it's tough to look at overtime in the first three months because we, that's when most vacations are and all that. So you really gotta trend it out over the course of six or eight months before you can really see how it's trending. But we, we've seen a little bit of decrease, and that goes back to some of the staffing models and levels that you have with each of your departments. Motor vehicle registration, parks and rec, nothing, nothing there. Impact revenues, again, you see them up, we do have money being spent. I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but as I've said, we are spending more time identifying money out of these accounts to spend on some of our capital improvement projects that fit this program. It's some, again, I hate to keep saying that every time I do this report, but I think it's important to show that, you know, we're really making concerted effort on some of those capital improvement programs, projects rather, to use money out of this, exactly where it's supposed to come from, and it's, and we'll continue to do so.
I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Susie.
I know we're waiting, are we still waiting for some kind of report on impact fees?
Yeah, we're probably about a month away, month and a half away from, from. Yeah, we're probably about a month away, month and a half away from being ready for you guys. Planning department's just about wrapped it up and then it goes through its processes before it comes to you. So yes, that is on its way. Yep. Reserve fund balances really haven't changed since last month. Couple of them are going to be decreased a little bit out of the school. I don't think those are reflected yet. The TIF report, so we changed a little bit of the TIF summary as was requested at, I think, the last meeting we had of this. Into it, the year-to-date is how much we put into it, which that money generally gets transferred pretty quickly. Budgeted is how much we planning to spend out of that. Year-to-date is what we've actually spent. And then if, and when you go all the way over to the year-end budget, where we expect it to be at the end of the year. You'll note that the balance and the year-end budget are lower, at least the downtown one. That is one that we've been trying to use. And each year, if you go back and look over the last, at least the three years, but I think it goes back a little bit further, but I can speak for the last three years, we have gone down in those lines on purpose. It hasn't been a ton of it, it's not like we're taking out, you know, dropping, we don't want to spike up or down. So you're seeing a continual decrease in what we leave for an end balance. So it's not looking like just a bank of money at the end of the year. So, and as you've seen, because you've had it in front of you, we're trying to use some of that money out of there. And again, identify this as projects and I think we've been successful with this so far. And continue to work on it. Counselor Felch deals with a lot with the TIFs and I know we have these same conversations with them on a monthly basis as well. Code statistics, building permits around where we were last year, but if you, I'm sorry, the total this month, they're about the same as what we were, but if you look at the year-to-date, this year to last year, you know, fifty-plus is a pretty good number of increase over a one-year period. Boat taxes, where we would expect them to be, and I'm fine with the revenue and expenditure section. EMS billing, we're not seeing anything crazy. We know that there's still money coming in. You look back at what we just had for a month with the Fire Department, though, that's going to be a lot. I didn't look to see how many of those were EMS, but there's going to be a lot of transports out of that and which should be pretty decent revenue return as well. I think that's all I have for you.
That's all I have.
Questions for the city manager? Counsel Susie?
Just a question, an update. When, should we, I believe one of the new ambulances is coming soon or is it delayed again?
So both ambulances have been delayed again. The amount of time for the apparatus that you guys have approved and is what used to be a hundred and eighty days to get an ambulance is three years now. It's absolutely ridiculous. Same thing with the fire apparatus, although we're actually probably going to get those first. Yeah, I know, versus the ambulance. There's a big push right now at the federal level to try to push manufacturers that says, you know, explain why we're in this position. This doesn't make sense to us. And there's actually been congressional hearings at the federal level on this exact issue right here that it's just not making sense, there's a safety factor behind it. So I think the, I think the New Hampshire Fire Chiefs are taking this up as well. I know that the Municipal Managers Group for New Hampshire is taking this up as well. So there's been a big push to try to get some explanation as to why we're, why we're seeing what we're seeing for these lag in...
I can understand some of it because when you look at over the last year, some of the major disasters we've had through the country, I'd probably expedite it, put those as a priority in front of some others.
We're not the only ones facing this. You know, this is, this is a national, you know, everybody's seeing the same problem.
Are we going to be okay with what we have?
We really need to get one of these in in the next probably six months or we may lose one of the, one of the ambulances. So hopefully at least one of them comes in. And Chief Hubert has been working, we had a conversation the other day about an alternative plan if that was to happen. So before we get to that point, and you know, I'm certainly not, you know, we're not in a crisis mode here with this, but before we get to that point, we'll make sure you kept notified, you know, in a public hearing or in a public meeting so you can hear what's going on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
All right. We're going to move to new business. Item twenty-one A. In accordance with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine A.A., William Prescott and Rosita Wickens, owner of four thirty-six Elm Street, submitted a request to restore their lot, which was involuntarily merged some years ago. After reviewing all the documents provided, neither the assessing department nor the planning department have any issues with the proposed unmerging of the lots. The two individual tracts are identified and recorded in Book two sixty-three, page two oh eight, from nineteen forty-three at the Belknap County Registry of Deeds. The city has no record of a request from the property owners that the lots be merged and the lots meet the requirements of unmerging. In accordance with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine A.A., the City Council must review the facts at hand and determine whether the lot should be restored. There's no impact. The Planning Department recommends the council approve the request. Counsel Susie?
I have only really one question. I believe that's Elm Street's...
Well, we need to move the question first. Do you want to move the question?
I'll second.
Okay. Counsel Susie, Counselor Felch seconds. Okay, now we're having a discussion.
My question is this, I believe that's Elm Street School right to the left if you look at the picture. I know we've had a lot of discussion about how we're going to work on the parking or the traffic problem around the school. Okay? Well, this, if this property is sold, does this affect us in any way to keep us from doing what maybe the school department might want to do in the future?
Nope.
No.
It's actually on the other side of the house. So the house borders the school.
And I see the blue lines, I know there was some discussion at one point about running traffic or running walkways through that back. If I might, that was, we no longer look at that, we're looking at it going out to the park. Okay.
Thank you. Sir, that's, do you have, that, you should have discussed that. It matters not, matters that are on the agenda, but I'll allow it.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to let you know, my name's Mike Donovan. I'm helping the homeowners out with the unmerging of the property and I was here to answer any questions you guys might have, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. I don't think there's any, sir. All right, thank you very much.
Counsel Hoffman.
How does a property get involuntarily merged?
In nineteen forty-three, somebody did that. And so they can't, when they go back and they looked at the deed, they found that with no explanation. So we don't know why.
There probably was...
Yeah, we don't know why.
Counsel Hoffman.
It's way some time ago.
There probably was a great big oak tree that was in question and that's where the property, I'm just kidding. All right.
The amount of work this would do to do this today compared to what they just changed it with a pencil, it's...
Is there any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Okay, thank you. Okay. Twenty-one B, request to change parking restrictions on Hill Street. Presently, Hill Street is no parking on both sides of the street from Clinton Street to Coal Street. The entire length of this, this is the entire length of the street. There are six residents whose driveways assess Hill Street between Clinton and Pear Street. Counsel Susie received a quest, a request from residents to eliminate the parking restrictions on Hill Street. Public Works does not recommend eliminating the restrictions due to the width of the road and the steepness of the hill on the street. The restrictions on Hill Street between Clinton and Pear could change to no parking on one side of the street. Due to the topography at the intersection of Clinton and Prospect Street, emergency vehicles may not be able to access Prospect and Coal Streets from Clinton Street. Thus, it may or may not be possible to change the restrictions between the two streets. Public Works recommends the City Council send their request to Government Operations and Ordinance for review and recommendations after receiving input from the Police and Fire Department. Public Works recommends that the City Council send this request to Government Operations and Ordinance Subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Counsel Susie?
Oh, I can send it to Government Operations and have the request.
No other discussion? All those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Okay, there's two meetings for Government Operations.
We're a busy, we're a busy committee.
Yes, it has been. All right, twenty-two A. Ordinance twenty-five dash two thirty-five dash twenty-one, amending chapter two thirty-five zoning relative to Article Four, overlay district, two thirty-five dash twenty-one, housing redevelopment, overlay district referred to as H R O D. Rob, would you like to just, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just give us a quick overview of this?
I think it's fun to put him on the spot.
Huh?
I think it's fun to put him on the spot.
So...
See, you come prepared.
You did.
Damn it.
So this was, the H R O D is to try to find a tool that people can use to find, to build affordable housing. So with that, we tried to, we used it innovatively and used control such as, similar to what we did with performance zoning, to add that tool to the H R O D in hopes that we would spur some affordable housing units. So last month, or not last month, I should say, the last City Council meeting we had where we discussed this, you asked me to go back and get some data for you. So with that, I've attached that to all the sheets there so everybody has a copy. So we looked at the entire residential general district because that's kind of where we're proposing it to be as the R G district really meets the definition of what we're trying to accomplish with the H R O D. So with that, forty-five percent of the housing types that are in R G are single-family homes. Twenty-eight percent are duplexes and the remaining twenty-seven percent are multifamily structures. So as you can see, it's a pretty good mix of housing types in that R G district, which is kind of what that district is designed to be. It's a mix of different housing types. So with that, we were, the H R O D is really intended to utilize or redevelop some of the small lots or smaller lots that really can't be developed any further than what they are because they were built in a time that was really before, that predated zoning. So if you look down under the residential parcel data, you'll see that six hundred and ninety-two of the parcels that are in R G are less than point two-five. And I say less than point two-five, the majority of these are point zero seven, point zero eight to point one. They're really not going to benefit from, from the H R O D. But once you start getting up into the point two to point three, you might be able to add a lot or two, which over the course of an entire zoning district adds up to, you know, potentially seven hundred units you could potentially add of affordable housing stock, which is really the intent of what the H R O D is trying to do. So as it showed here, almost a thousand of the lots are less than half an acre. And then as you start up getting up into the larger lots, you find that it really starts getting pretty scarce. There are a few outliers. There's, I think, seventeen parcels that are larger than an acre in the entirety of the R G district. So there's really not a whole lot. And of those, there's, there are a school or a cemetery or some larger lots that have just never been developed, most likely because of there's some butlers that are on them. So that's kind of the data I've got. I'm willing to answer any questions, anything at all?
Counsel Susie?
If I, if I understand...
Recommendation, if you're going to have discussion, take it off the table first, if you're going to have discussion.
I'll make a motion and take it off the table.
Second of a Counsel Hoffman. I apologize, I didn't see that.
No, 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 that's good.
Okay?
All those in favor of taking it off the table? Six votes in the affirmative.
If I understand this correctly, if we change this, it allows you're increasing density in some areas and you're allowing the property owners to come to the Planning Commission or the Planning Board and say, "I want to do this, this or that." If this is not just a blanket, okay, what this does is it gives you the avenue to talk to them. You still might say no. Okay, but if they say no, then they go to the Z B A and the Z B A says yes, what difference does it make, right?
So yes, this is just adding, I'll say, a tool to our toolbox to incentivize people to build affordable housing units. And they could...
I fully agree with it.
And they could, and this isn't increasing the overall density for the entire district. It is just, if you're using the tool, you can use, you can, you can use, you have a greater density you can play with to adjust for units. But it's all dependent on getting approval from the zoning board. So they could go to the zoning board and say, "That's still too many lots for that," or "This doesn't meet this," or "This doesn't meet this." Other benefits are, it's you're reducing the number of utility connections you have going down the street, reducing costs for the city overall and for the residences as you go down. It also helps fix some of our drainage issues that we already have that are outstanding on some of these lots because I think Public Works has a very finite budget for drainage. And with each of these, they'd have to go to Planning Board and they'd have to have a drainage study done and they'd be working at improving drainage. So it's kind of a, there's a lot of benefits to the city just for providing the tool for a developer to add a couple of workforce housing units.
Okay, I think it's awesome because what I see from the results of this, it happens, it increases the inventory of affordable housing. Okay, so naturally when you have a higher inventory, hopefully the overall cost comes down to the people that are renting. Okay, so it's not a monopoly like it is today in some cases, okay? So that's where I see the multiple benefit. I just wanted to make sure that it still has to go through the Planning Board and you just explained, look at all these things so that you might say, "No, you can't do it." Okay, this is not just a blanket, okay, go ahead and do whatever you want.
That's absolutely correct. They still have to get Planning Board and it's even specifically written in there that Planning Board does not have to approve this. So we have a lot of safeguards that we've, lessons learned in the past from performance zoning that we've taken into account for this to make sure that we've safeguarded the city and the butters and trying to make sure that any development that comes in is going to meet the character of the neighborhood is being built in.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Counselor Cheney?
He probably has a legitimate question.
Counsel Hoffman, then we'll go to Counsel Cheney with this.
It's a quick one. Did you say in the previous meeting that the way the housing overlay district works right now, that no one has ever actually applied to utilize it?
Correct.
And we had someone in the audience at the last meeting that was basically ready to utilize this new one as written. I think that's encouraging.
It was. She, after the last meeting we had, she stopped me out in the hallway after the meeting and we talked about it and she was, she was like, you know, "This is exactly what we're looking for." She's like, "We would like to provide affordable housing to people." And they had, they had one of these locks that was developed many years ago and it was very tough to add that unit. So it was a great tool for them.
Yeah, I think this is a good idea and as long as, like you said, as long as there's still a public hearing process for things that are being built in people's neighborhoods and a chance for people to come and voice their concerns about things that are proposed, then I think, I think this is a good idea.
Okay, Counsel Wogan?
Does this do a deed restriction on the property? Now, once we deed restrict a property, then that becomes either an income-based type of situation?
Yep.
Yep, okay. And we already have ninety apartments, thereabouts, that are income-based that already show some strain of having people sign up for those due to the fact of many different things, income-based and stuff like this. So I'm curious, by creating an income-based housing overlay district, that we're going to then limit the amount of housing for people who don't fit into the income bracket? Because now, if I'm... Because now, if I make a dollar more than the income bracket, I can't live here. So, now, the opposite's going to start to happen. Those that are, are not in this bracket, but not way up here in that bracket, are now being taken out of the housing market because of workforce housing. So, I'm just, I'm concerned about that because I see brand-new apartments that, as I drive through their parking lot, I, I see a lot of empty spaces and a lot of empty rooms. And, I'm just concerned with deed restriction. I'm all against lower price point stuff, you know, for across the board, but when the deed is restricted, that's like a fifty-year deal, and now you've locked up a lot of housing that people can't move to.
I think there's probably a lot of variables with the Providence Street property that you're referring to.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm not saying there isn't, I'm just, my concern here is, to satisfy one person that wants to do something for it, they can go and do what they need to do through zoning variances and whatnot, where we're taking a large swath of a very dense area, A, where we now, because the state unwittingly went from one point five parking spaces to one parking space. So, we know in these dense areas that we already have problem with parking already. So, if this apartment new setup is set up with only one parking space, where's the other car going to go? Lot of folks have two people that live together, and that means two vehicles, and if you're working anywhere, you're going to need a car. So, the question still comes back to, where will the extra cars park? And it's going to be in the street. So, as they park into the streets, are we going to run into this same kind of problem we have already been addressing tonight due to parking? And, in the past year, I know with this council has addressed parking issues at least five different times in five different areas. So, by creating a more density in an area, it's going to create more cars, and how much more problems are we going to have with the neighborhoods than that this is going to be created in? And, and how will we address that? Will we end up, as a city, saying no parking in any street whatsoever in the downtown area? Because, all of this area is, is, is set up close to the downtown area, and our most dense area already. That is problematic with parking. So, keep that in mind, for the two reasons. One, we're going to restrict who can live there, and then, two, what are we going to do with the vehicles? So just keep, that's why I'm, I'm kind of concerned about this, and, and, and trying to satisfy, one, which is great, that someone wants to do it, but they do have the ability to use the zoning board and the planning board for variances and stuff to achieve whatever they're trying to achieve.
Okay, so Counsel, Counsel, Counselor Cheney was first.
Okay, sorry. I, I started out with one question, and now I have two. The black area here?
So, on the black area, that is what the current HROD is. So you see, it's really, that's probably another reason why it was never used, it was, it's just not a.
Small place.
It's just a very, very small place.
The other question I had for you is, if someone started, wanted to come in and, and increase density on their lot, but they don't want to make it low-income, can they go to the ZPA and ask for a variance?
Yes, so this, this tool is just for those who are trying to do workforce housing. If somebody else wanted to develop market rate or any other type of housing, and they wanted to increase density, or they would need to go to the zoning board, and they need to seek the applicable relief. In regard to the, the parking, the city is, is very much, our hands are tied with, concerned with the parking. The state went, went over us and superseded our power on that and said, you can only regulate one parking spot per residential unit. So there's, there's virtually nothing I can do about the parking. That is, that was the state that handcuffed us there.
Counsel Felch. So, the parking, they're going to have to have a place to park an additional vehicle if they have one, because they can't park in the streets in the middle of the winter.
So, here we lie with the dilemma.
Oh, Paul? Counsel Suzy has a.
I apologize.
Counsel Suzy.
The parking situation, and I agree with you, Counsel Felch, but the developer, or whoever wants to do this, has to take that into consideration, because they're not going to be able to rent it, you might say, if they can't provide a parking. So that's all part of that solution. I think this is still, I think this is great, because we've got to build that inventory.
And, and I've had discussions with, sorry.
Go ahead.
Developers have, have talked to me, and even though the state requirement is one, many of them don't want to do one. It's very hard for them to market one parking space, and they, you're more often than not finding a couple that wants to rent a unit. So the one parking space, even though it's a state requirement, and that's all we can legally require of them, that is not really a feasible solution for a developer coming in to do a development. And that's, through discussions I've had with developers that have come in, especially in the last few weeks, so.
Counsel Hoffman.
Well, you did just answer one of my questions, so that's good.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that the, the workforce housing component of this is either two units or twenty percent, whichever is greater. So, as much as we need workforce housing, I, I guess to allay some of your concerns, I doubt very much someone's going to come forward with a proposal that, that exceeds that. If they're meeting that in order to get the things that this housing district allows them to do, it's just the economic reality of it. They're not going to come in here with eighty percent workforce housing in a unit, because they're not going to make any money on that, right?
No, and you know what, we, Tyler and I just went to a planning conference down at Tuscan Village, and it was the, the owner of Tuscan Village and the, the planner of, of Salem, they were all talking about, these are components that they also looked at in their kind of performance zoning area that they developed Tuscan Village at. And they were like, you know, you really can't do more than twenty, and even twenty is kind of pushing the limits of what's economically viable for a developer to come in and, and redevelop. So we're really at the cusp. If anything, you know, if we find twenty percent is even too much, it might be something we need to reevaluate in even five years to say, maybe twenty percent was too much, maybe we need to reduce that down to ten percent. So I, I think there's some, there's room for play, and, and waiting for some data to come in. Because after all, at the end of the day, when we adopted performance zoning back in two thousand nineteen, it was, it was years before people actually started utilizing the tool to redevelop. So, I'm, I'm sure even if City Council was to adopt this tonight, it's, it's probably not an over-the-night hit list that somebody's going to come, oh, I want to utilize this. So, I think there'll be time for us to review the data, as developers come in and see what's working and what we need to amend.
Counsel Bogut.
Just a question. Can we modify the overlay district to remove a ward if, if they are already feel like they're overly densely populated, and, and leave it in areas where people wish to have such thing?
Yeah, you, you absolutely could. If you wanted this to go back to Planning Board and for them to amend the boundaries of what that was, you could do that.
Just quickly.
I'm sorry?
Quickly.
I would like for this to go back to the Planning Board and remove Ward Five.
No. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion fails. Anyone else? Okay, oh, there are three motions. I move to ra, waive a reading of Ordinance 25-235-21 in its entirety and read by title only. So moved.
Second.
Counsel Felch, Counsel Hoffman, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Okay, five to one. Counselor Bogut opposes. Second motion, I, I move to conduct a second reading of Ordinance 25-235-21, amending Chapter 235 zoning ordinance, Article 4 overlay district, 235-21 housing redevelopment overlay district. Is there a motion? So moved. Counsel Felch, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Suzy. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five votes in the affirmative, one opposed. Counsel Bogut. Last but not least, I move to approve Ordinance 2025-235-21, amending Chapter 235 zoning ordinance, Article 4 overlay district, 235-21 housing and redevelopment overlay district. Is there a motion? Counsel Felch, Counsel Hoffman, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five votes in affirmative. Counsel Bogut, as opposed. All right. Twenty-two B, resolution relative to authorizing the acceptance of the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars to fund the Laconia Police Department's tethered drone project. We had a public hearing on this prior to this, is there anything else that needs to be added? Counsel, I'm sorry, correct?
I just want to throw it, because I know Counsel Hoffman asked to look into their current drones that they have and what maintenance costs and stuff. There was none to speak of. You know, batteries here, batteries there, it was all currently within their current maintenance, and, and the chief actually didn't have anything specific unless something was to break, and they haven't had any issues with that as of yet.
Yeah, and I, I think my point with that is when we get these, I guess in the future, I would, under fiscal impact, I guess I would just like to see the ongoing costs mentioned, right? Because, a grant is one thing, but if it actually costs.
Oh, good.
Or something on a yearly basis, that's a different, it's different, right?
Yeah, and we probably won't recognize this for a year, for probably a couple of years, but yes, we can, we can try to look into that for the future, if, you know, what a battery would look like three years down the line, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, my comment wasn't necessarily specific to this grant.
No, 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 just trying to, yep, just.
Thank you.
Counselor Cheney?
I, I may well be wrong, but I believe that tethered ones don't, don't have batteries. The tether itself carries them, so at least we won't have that expense. The reason this is important is Motorcycle Weekend. There may be once in a while something else, but Motorcycle Weekend is the real reason for it, and I would move the question, Mr..
All right, thank you. There are three motions. Motion one, I am moved to waive the reading of Resolution 2025-30 in its entirety and a read by title only. Counselor Cheney, is there a second? Counsel Felch, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Second, I move to second, the second reading of Resolution 2025-30 relative to authorizing the acceptance of New Hampshire Department of Safety 2025 Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars to fund the Laconia Police Department's tethered drone project. Is there a motion? Counsel Felch, Counsel Suzy, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Third motion, I move to approve Resolution 2025-30 relative to authorizing the acceptance of New Hampshire Department of Safety 2025 Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars to fund the Laconia Police Department tethered drone project as presented and authorized the city manager to sign all documents related to the matter. Counsel Cheney seconds, Counsel Cheney. Counsel Suzy, seconds. Made more, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Counsel Cheney? No, sorry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Twenty-two C, resolution to authorizing the acceptance of New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant, Competitive Grant in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars to fund the Laconia Police Department's Utility Side-by-Side Project. We had a public hearing regards to that, is there anything else that needs to be added to that?
If I can just make a comment.
Sure.
I want to compliment the chief, because we talked about buying it, and what he's done is gone out and gotten us a grant, so we don't have to buy it.
Right.
So we ought to be thankful.
I agree. Counsel Suzy?
One question for the city manager.
Yes.
You know, it'd be interesting to know how much money the police department has gotten in grants for this year or for last year, because they work at that very well.
No, I'm. I mean, we have it in the budget, plus the ones we've added. We'll add that up and.
You know, like.
Yeah, we'll add it up and get it to you for a number.
Sure.
I'm not going to do it off the top of my head.
Right, the items and, and.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good. You know, in, in the police departments across the country, it's, it's an, it's a service that has opportunity in a lot of grants, and I will guarantee that not everybody takes advantage of them. We have a group that takes advantage of them, so.
Now we.
Yeah, we'll pull out the full, yeah, we'll do the full numbers.
Great idea, thank you. All right, I move to waive the reading of Resolution 2025-31 in its entirety, read by title only. Counselor Cheney? Second. Counsel seconded by Counsel Hoffman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. I move a second reading of Resolution 2025-31 relative to authorizing the acceptance of the New Hampshire Department of Safety 2025 Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars to fund the Laconia Police Department's Utility Side-by-Side Vehicle Project. Counsel Felch, counsel, seconded by Counsel Cheney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. I move to approve Resolution 2025-31 relative to authorizing the acceptance of the New Hampshire Department of Safety 2025 Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars to fund the Laconia Police Department Utility Side-by-Side Vehicle Project as presented and authorized the city manager to sign all documents related to that matter. Counsel Suzy? Counsel Bogut, seconds it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Twenty-two D. Ordinance 2025-2001-7, 2001-13, amending paragraph 201-7, depositing snow and ice in paragraph 201-13, violation and penalties to Chapter 201, streets and sidewalks. That was discussed during the public hearings, is there anything else that needs to be added to that? Okay. There's three motions to that. I move to waive a reading of Ordinance 2025, 201-7, 201-13 in its entirety and read by title only. Counsel Cheney? Counsel Felch, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. I move a second reading of Ordinance 2025, 201-7, 201-13, amending paragraph 201-7, depositing snow and ice in paragraph 201-13, violation and penalties to Chapter 201, streets and sidewalks. Is there a motion? Counsel Hoffman? Counsel Cheney, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. I move to approve Ordinance 2025-201-7, 201-13, amending paragraph 201-7, depositing snow and ice in paragraph 201-13, violations and penalties to Chapter 201, streets and sidewalks as presented. Is there a motion? Counsel Felch, seconded by Counsel Bogut. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Twenty-two E. Amending paragraph two. Amending paragraph two, two hundred and twenty-one dash thirty-six to article three, parking and standing and stopping to chapter two oh, two hundred and twenty-one vehicles' proposal for a residential parking permit system. Is there anything that needs to be added to that? This was, went to operations in ordinance subcommittee back in August. Subcommittee recommended the system should include, as we discussed. Is there anything else that needs to be added or any other discussion? Okay?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I'm, I'm looking over all of this. I don't see a
Counsela Susie.
I don't see a fee on here anywhere.
Initial fee is ten dollars and you'll see it in there. And then follow on. Years after that, it'll be established by the city manager based off of cost of printing and everything.
I'm looking for the ten dollars somewhere in here.
I'd have to find that one. Let's see. Oh, wait a second. I went over on piece. Yep. Yep, let's see. Parking permit fee. City manager has designated, will establish appropriate fee for permits issued under this article, page two of the ordinance, subparagraph H on page two.
Okay.
If you look at the attached application for upcoming, it's established at ten dollars.
He, but it's not written in here yet.
Correct. It doesn't have to be in here. That's how I've written it.
Oh, okay.
Because then it gives the flexibility as the costs go up for printing the permits for the city manager to change it.
Okay.
It's on the application.
Yeah.
It's designated as an exception.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, we have three motions. I move to waive reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash twenty, two twenty-one dash thirty-six dash period one in its entirety and to read by title only. Counsela Chini, Counsel Felch seconds it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. I move a second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash two, twenty-one dash thirty-six, amending paragraph two twenty-one dash thirty-six, period one to article three parking, standing and stopping to chapter two twenty-one vehicles' proposing a resident-only parking system. Is there a motion? Counsela Chini, Counselor Bogart seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Six votes in the affir, in the affirmative. I move to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash twenty, two twenty-one dash thirty-six, amending paragraph two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-six, period one to article three parking, standing, stopping to chapter two twenty-one vehicles establishing resident-only parking system as presented. Counsela Chini, Counsel Felch seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Okay. Twenty-two F, resolution to expend funds for the downtown TIF, pedestrian safety, circulation and pumpkin festival. I think we took that up as
Yep.
in a public hearing and explained what the expenditures were. Counselor Hoffman, may I just borrow yours for just a quick second? Okay, there are three motions to that. I move to waive the reading of resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-two in its entirety and read by title only. Counsel Susie, Counsel Bogart second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Excuse me. I move a second reading of resolution twenty-five dash thirty-two relative to request the use of downtown TIF funds to enhance pedestrian safety and circulation for the Laconia Pumpkin Fest, Festival. Counsela Susie, Counsel Felch seconds. Is there any discussion? Counsela Susie.
My, my question, my question is probably for Rob and the city manager. I know that we had a discussion last time that if we got these items, which I think are pretty significant and very pleased to have those for the Laconia Pumpkin Festival in downtown, are the TIF rules, can we change them in any way? Or can we amend them so that if we wanted to use some of this equipment in other areas, like the Lakeport or the Wears, is there something that we can do to help that? Because I think it's great that we have them and they're gonna be used year over year. But can we, can we do, is there something we can do in that area?
TIF rules are in RSA.
It's an RSA.
Yeah.
So we'd have to go back to the legislature to give them
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That means that's, that's dead on the street.
Counsel Felch. So I will say that we will be able to use them in any other events that we have going on in this TIF area, in the Laconia TIF area.
No, 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 in the downtown area.
Downtown TIF.
Right. I was, I was trying to
I know, but
Tony is using another area.
I'm just saying for the public's awareness that we can use them for other events, not just Pumpkin Fest.
Oh, yes. I've already got plans for making them
Like concerts on Canal Street, any other events we have in city hall parking lot, multicultural festival. They can be used anywhere in the downtown TIF area.
I'd just like to be able to take advantage of you because it's a great investment and we're gonna use them year over year. But I also know they could have use for them in the other areas.
Is there any other discussion?
I, one more thing.
Sure.
I'd like to request that Counsel Bogart, maybe you put this into amendment to the bill and maybe we can use them within the city and our other TIF areas of the, maybe the RSA could get changed or amended.
I would love to, but the submitting of bills have already
Next time around.
The following session.
If we have to, yes.
We'll discuss it.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
You could, however, offer it as an amendment to some totally unrelated bill.
I could.
Yep.
I could.
Give it some thought.
Hopefully appropriations.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Finally, I move to approve resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-two relative to the request to use downtown TIFs to enhance pedestrian safety, circulation and circulation for Laconia Pumpkin Festival as presented. Counsela Susie? Counselor Felch second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. All right, gentlemen, that concludes anything to the meeting tonight. Madam Clerk, we're adjourned at eight thirty, eight fifty-three.